Good evening. Gentlemen, you want to play our news update? We have a show for you tonight.
Hello and welcome to this North Penn News Update. I'm Lauren Schwartz. North Penn High School celebrated the retirement of longtime athletic director Doc Ryan in grand style. Sitting at center court of the NPHS Gymnasium, Doc was the center of attention for his final night at North Penn. After several heartfelt sentiments by current and retired staff members and student athletes, Doc was presented with a quilt created from T-shirts from the sports teams at NPHS. After thanking the crowd for his special night, Doc ceremoniously handed over the Knight's Sword to Bill Bartle, the new athletic director. Congratulations to Doc on his retirement, and we thank him for his 46 years of service to the North Penn School District. Dr. Kirk Dietrich and the administrative team have been out and about presenting this year's Superintendent Honor Roll Award to three deserving staff members. Nominated by their peers, the award is given to those staff members who display outstanding dedication and service to the students and staff of the North Penn School District. This year, Pendale Middle School's Assistant Principal Jason Bashaw was surprised with his award at a staff meeting. Known for being the PSSA and cafeteria duty ambassador of Pendale, Jason is a true team player who never wants to take credit for his work by often saying, "We all work hard. It is what we do. We are our team." Gwinor Elementary Secretary Cheryl Vilsmeier was overwhelmed when she received her award at an all-school assembly. Cheryl's nominees said she is the glue that holds Gwinor together. She knows everything about everything and is always willing to help everyone with a smile on her face. And the final award winner this year was North Penn High School English teacher Ellen McKee. Ellen's peers nominated her for her dedication to teach her students through a variety of innovative learning activities such as the Vocabulary Bowl and the Literacy Festival. Ellen believes in each of her students and is always willing to help each one of them find their motivation for learning. Congratulations once again to these three deserving Superintendent Honor Roll Award winners. The North Penn High School Music Department hosted the Pennsylvania Music Educators Association's District 11 Band Concert. Over 100 adjudicated musicians from 32 bucks of Montgomery County Public and Private High Schools participated in the three-day festival. Under the direction of West Chester University's Dr. Gregory Martin, the group played eight selections for the appreciative audience during their grand finale concert. Congratulations to Gwinnett Square teacher Deborah Buckner for being selected as the Physical Education Teacher of the Year by the Pennsylvania State Association for Health, Physical Education, Recreation and Dance Incorporated. Buckner has taught for 35 years, and in addition to teaching, she also choreographs the North Penn High School Theater Department's plays and musicals. Congratulations on this procedure's honor. And finally, this is National Schoolwide Recognition Month, and we would like to thank the North Penn Board of School Directors for their volunteer service to the students and staff of the North Penn School District. Thank you to each one of you for all that you do. For North Penn News, I'm Lauren Schwartz. Have a great night.
Welcome to our regularly scheduled action meeting. This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania's Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the Audience of Citizens logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, the board president may ask the individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. And now, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start, I want to announce that we had an executive session. The full board met in executive session tonight, January 15, 2015, from 6:30 PM to 7:30 PM to discuss matters of personnel, potential litigation, and negotiations.
And Mr. President, if I may, I'd like to make an announcement. Also, I do have some breaking news, if you will. I did receive a call just a few minutes ago from Mr. Alan Malahousky, our president of the North Penn Education Association, whereby he informed me that the teachers had voted in favor and approved the mediator's proposal. And I will share the details of that mediator's proposal at this time. It has been on our website. It's a link on the website, if you're also interested in looking at it in its full form. But the highlights are, this is a term of two years. It runs from July 1, 2014, through June 30, 2016. There is no salary increase. There is a hard freeze for the first half of the 2014-15 school year. Then, teachers will be paid according to a new salary schedule, which has been increased by an average of 1.1 percent. And I say an average because we were able to accomplish some smoothing of the steps on the salary schedule, with some steps getting slightly more and some steps getting slightly less. And furthermore, teachers who are not at the top step of the salary schedule, it is a 16-step salary schedule, and we maintain a 16-step salary schedule, those teachers not at the top step of the salary schedule will advance one full step on the new salary schedule at the midpoint of the 2014-15 school year. And this mid-year step movement will provide, on average, an additional $1,502 of compensation for teachers who are not at max step of the contract for the 2014-15 school year. The salary schedule for the 2015-2016 school year has been increased by an average of 1.35 percent from the previous salary schedule. Same conditions applying in that some are getting slightly more of an increase in that salary schedule, and some steps in there are getting less of an increase to the salary schedule. And likewise, teachers who are not at max step would advance one full step effective the midpoint of the year and be paid accordingly on the salary schedule for that next step. The healthcare coverage modifications are a part of the mediator's proposal. They do increase the co-pays in selected areas with a $200 deductible per person, thereby being a maximum of $600 for family coverage with families that have greater than three members, and a 14 percent premium share paid by the employee effective March 1, 2015, and a 16 percent premium share paid by employees effective July 1, 2015, for core plan coverage. Also noteworthy in this mediator's proposal, effective July 1, 2015, there's a surcharge of $100 per month for employees on the district healthcare plan who are tobacco users unless the covered employee is in a tobacco cessation program. Also of importance, there are changes to the reimbursement and salary schedule movement for advanced coursework. There is a reduction of one day in the length of the teacher work year. And I will say that the cost of the contract, those being salaries, medical benefits, tuition reimbursement, is estimated to fall within the Act I parameters for budgetary purposes. The school board, the NPA negotiations team, and the administration have been working hard for more than a year to develop a contract that is fair, and the mediator's proposal represents that effort. I thank the 900-plus members of the teachers' union for their patience as they worked without a new contract since July. With that said, then, we will have as a motion, excuse me, as an agenda item, we will be looking for a motion to second an approval of the mediator's proposal as described and as available on our website.
So we have put it on the agenda tonight under contracts. It will be added, and the public should be aware before they make public comment that this will be added to our agenda tonight. And if you want to see the actual report itself, we have a link posted on the website. It's been there for a while, so you get a chance to review it and print it out if you want, for that matter. All right, I'm going to move forward. First, thank you. I'm going to move forward with recognition and proclamations, which is always a break time for the board, so.
It is. Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, we are pleased to recognize members of the 2014-2015 North Penn High School Girls Water Polo Team. And with us this evening, we have Coach Bill Bartle.
Is this our new A.D.?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Dietrich. I appreciate that. And thank you to the board and the administration for this evening's invitation. This evening, we have a very good group of girls to recognize. They not are, I'm sorry, they are outstanding in the pool, but all these girls are also outstanding in the classroom, which is most important. As far as this year's season, the girls started off a little bit rocky. We started off 0-3, but then they began to work extremely hard, challenging one another, and we had a very bright finish. We won the league title, and at the end of the year, we won the state title. So they did an excellent job. The first individual I'd like to recognize is Amy Bauer. Amy is a junior. Amy plays the center position. She was first-team All-State, first-team All-Lig, and All-Eastern Conference team. Our second individual is junior Leah Brown. Leah was a driver, and Leah was recognized as second-team All-Lig and All-Eastern Team. Our next individual, Olivia DiStefano. Olivia is a senior. Olivia was first-team All-Lig, All-Eastern Team, and All-State Honorable Mention. Our next individual, our only sophomore, Kalen Evans. Kalen was also a driver, and Kalen received All-Eastern honors. Next, Stephanie Gletta. Stephanie was a captain of this year's team. She is a two-meter defensive specialist. Stephanie was second-team All-State, All-Eastern Team, and second-team All-Lig. Next, Abby Haldeman. Abby was also captain of this year's team. Abby was a driver, All-Eastern Team. Next, junior Aaron O'Neal. Aaron was a driver as well. Aaron was first-team All-State, first-team All-Lig, and All-Eastern Team. And our final individual, Shannon Quinn. Shannon is also a junior and a driver, and she was first-team All-State, first-team All-Lig, and first-team All-Eastern Team. Once again, thank you.
I'd like all of you to come through, like all the central administration, full board, congratulate you. And Billy, would you join up here?
Sure, thank you.
Excuse their wet hair, but they just came from swim practice.
That's what they just asked.
Great job.
Another banner.
Can you ask him what a driver is?
Where he's at. It's a utility player.
That's what they said.
I didn't hear.
Also this evening, we are pleased to recognize members of the 2014-2015 North Penn High School Boys Water Polo Team. And with us this evening, we have Coach Jason Grubb.
I'd like to say thanks to the school board and the administration for giving the opportunity to recognize their accomplishments this year. Our boys finished a very successful year, finishing with a record of 26-1, first in our conference and ended up second in our state. We were also the first North Penn team to win a multi-state Beast of the East championship, which encompasses all of Pennsylvania and all the best teams on the East Coast. First, we have Mark Donegan. Mark is a senior, and he was recognized as second-team All-Conference. Next, we have senior captain Brett Else. Brett was named first All-Conference, first-team All-State, and also won the Mr. Water Polo Award. He's recognized as the state's MVP. Next, we have Mike Gallo. Mike is a senior. He was named to the second-team All-Conference and second-team All-State. Next, we have Liam Kelly. Liam was named to the third-team All-Conference. Next, we have Thanis Kontrouvis. Thanis is a senior. He was also awarded with a third-team All-Conference.
Remember, they bleached their hair one year?
Next, we have another senior captain, Cole Palumbo.
Oh, yeah.
No, it's usually green.
Cole was named first-team All-Conference and first-team All-State.
It's not blond.
And continuing in the spirit of proclamations and recognition, at this time, I would like
And finally, we have Skylar Troutz.
to recognize a staff member for being recognized as the elementary physical education teacher
Skylar was named second-team All-Conference and third-team All-State.
Guys, we're going to have an opportunity for a full board and the administration to
of the year by the Pennsylvania State Association for Health, Physical Education, Recreation and Dance Incorporated, Ms. Debra Buckner. And Deb, if you could please come forward.
congratulate each and every one of you, so would you guys come through?
Deb is a Gwinnett Square Elementary School gym teacher.
And Jason, would you come through again?
She was recognized.
Congratulations to her.
Thank you again, guys.
No quality and good teaching value.
Can I offer it? Absolutely. Come around. Grab the ball.
Again, congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Make sure you smile for all your students.
Please, another round of applause would be great.
I do have just a few more things I wanted to say about Deb, so I will say those. Deb's been teaching health and phys ed for 35 years. She started working for North Penn School District in 1993, where she challenges her students not only in physical education but also in other academic areas in order for students to make connections between everything they learn. She strives to help every student find joy in moving. She wants her students to feel safe, respected, and challenged during gym class, and encourages them to be active outside of school as well. So again, congratulations, Deb.
Well done.
I also have two students I would like to recognize. We had two students handing out the board agendas this evening. And with us this evening, the assistant handing out the agendas, we had Jaden Cartwright and Gavin Good. So gentlemen, if you would just come up. They are students at Montgomery Elementary.
We're going to congratulate you for your efforts, and make sure you get it on camera. Congratulations.
Jaden, again, I appreciate everything you do for us. Gavin, thank you so much. Appreciate all you do for us.
You guys want to shake everybody's hand? Come on through.
Sure, why not?
Come through. Absolutely.
Pretty sharp dresser, huh?
Yeah.
You are styling, young man.
Welcome to the board.
Yeah, you're looking sharp, too.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thanks a lot.
Just don't tell the Department of Labor, who've got child labor issues or what's in it.
And then finally, this is, as was mentioned in the opening show, this is School Board Recognition Month, and I do wish to congratulate and thank the members of our North Penn School Board for all of their service. I understand what's involved in being a board member, as I was a board member earlier in my life, and it takes a lot of dedication, a lot of commitment, a lot of time, a lot of expertise, and we appreciate what our board members do as volunteers for our community. So a round of applause, please, for our school board. That concludes the recognitions and proclamations.
Thank you, Dr. Dietrich. All right, it is now time for the public to speak, and our audience of citizens, anybody wishing to speak to the board, please feel free to step forward, state your name and address, sign the Audience of Citizens logbook. Okay. Recommend, thank you. Recommend approval of the minutes of the December 11, 2014, action meeting and the January 6, 2015 work session as circulated.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mrs. Charnock. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. I'm going to go to committee reports, and I'm going to start with Safe Schools. Carolyn Murphy.
Thank you. The Safe Schools Committee met on January 5 and discussed the following. We reviewed and discussed a presentation provided by Central York School District regarding their October 2013 active shooter drill. This drill included the participation of the entire school community and over 100 local, state, and federal officials. It was a live drill that tested all of Central York's emergency procedures and taught them many valuable lessons. The Safe Schools Committee will reach out to Central York District and request to sit down and speak with them about their lessons learned and the planning of the drill so that North Penn can prepare something that is similar. I also want to thank Christine Libarowski, who came from Community Ed that night to attend our meeting. The administration presented their exterior door survey, which provides detailed information of the types of exterior door systems and doors in all of North Penn's buildings. And I'm not kidding, every single door in this district was put up on a slide. So I mean, it wasn't, thank you, Mr. Schneider. It was an amazing thing. This information will be used to make suggestions to improve the security of the North Penn buildings. The next meeting of the Safe Schools Committee is scheduled, this is Monday, March 3, but we have decided this evening that Safe Schools and Support Services Group will meet together on the 26th of January at 6:30. So Support Services and Safe Schools will have a joint meeting that night. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of Safe Schools this evening?
What time is the Safe Schools meeting?
6:30.
Okay. And followed by Support Services.
No, we're going to meet together. We're going to meet at a joint meeting.
We have a joint venue.
Yeah. Any other questions? All right, I'm going to move forward with Personnel. Timothy Kerr.
Personnel Committee met in executive session January 6 from 5 to 6 PM to discuss matters of personnel, negotiations, and potential litigation.
Thank you. Support Services, John Schilling.
Yeah, Support Services and Committee has not met since our last board meeting, so we're going to have a meeting, our next meeting is Monday, January 26, at 6:30 here at the Educational Service Center, and we're going to kind of meet together with the Safe Schools and discuss some certain issues. We feel that, you know, it'll be a great meeting. You need to try to make it, everybody, okay? End of report.
Thank you, John. Education, Community, and Policy, Suzanne Leonard.
Thank you, Mr. Shapinski. The ECP Committee met on Monday, January 12. At the meeting, the committee reviewed a new board policy regarding home education. The policy delineates the process for the home education application. In addition, this policy incorporates the new legal requirements associated with home education. Also at the meeting, the committee received an update from the Curriculum Department. The update reflected all work to date that supports the district's comprehensive plan. Some highlights include the implementation of the PA Core standards and new PSSA assessment items into the curriculum. Another accomplishment has been the institution of digital resources to differentiate and personalize instruction. The committee also reviewed an overnight student trip to Germany for the purpose of visiting the sister schools for North Penn High School in Elyon and Salzgiter.
Allen and Salzgiter.
I defer to the expert. That trip is on tonight's agenda. An update regarding high school activities was shared by the student member of the committee. Upcoming events are the Winter Ball on January 24 and the Wing Bowl in February. The next meeting of the ECP Committee is February 9, 2015, at 6:30 PM. I also want to say one thing, that we were given, you know, an overview of the curriculum and the e-readers and things of that nature and the software programs, and we suggested that members of the administration come to the full board to talk about what's going on. It's very exciting about the digital age. So thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of ECP tonight?
Yes. I'm not sure if you can answer this, but it comes under ECP under Christine's. I'd like to get an update on, there's going to be a $68,000 upgrade to the system here and some monitors, I'm told. Do you have any idea the latest?
February 2nd, 3rd, and 4th.
I have no idea what you said.
February 2nd, 3rd, and 4th.
I'm sorry, what was that?
2nd, 3rd of February.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions of ECP tonight? Finance, Frank O'Donnell.
We have not met, or we did not meet last month.
We did meet last month, and Steve, I didn't write it down, but I assume we normally file the two committees now, so Finance will file, so there'll be Support Services, Safe Schools, and then Finance right after that.
Correct, January 26.
Okay.
On the 26th. Yeah, we're just, yeah. We're together. We want to take more time.
Okay. So that's the report, end of report. Thank you, Frank. Any questions of Finance? North Penn Educational Foundation, Carolyn Murphy.
Although the Foundation Board did not meet this month, a lot of work has been going on in the background. The breaking news is that a new fundraising event we are planning for April that will include a week-long online auction and a culminating social event, tentatively to be held April 18 at the Hatfield Auto Museum. I hope everyone will save the date for this social event. That will be tons of fun. More details will be coming very soon, and I'm hoping to get all of these men there, finally. This should be a night you should really enjoy. I also wanted to thank all of our families who took the time to make a staff tribute donation this past holiday season. Many of our staff members here at North Penn, in lieu of gifts, were recognized by students and their families with the contribution to the foundation. In particular, I would like to point out North Penn High School Technology Education teacher Mike Boyer. The parents of one of his former students, now a Drexel student, donated $1,000 to the foundation in honor of Mike. This is by far the largest single-staff tribute donation ever made, in a testament to Mike, the technology education program at NPHS, and the supportiveness of this community. Several grants were implemented over the past month as well. We recently received thank-you notes from our first-grade intermediate English language learners at Oak Park Elementary School. The foundation funded a trip for these students to Salisbury Orchards. Part of the educational benefit of this trip was writing thank-you notes and creating drawings about their visit. These notes and pictures will be shared with the Foundation Board at our February meeting. Finally, next month is the being named or termed Foundation February. The foundation's student members, Taylor Young and Erin Hubner, are developing a plan to get all of our schools more involved in fundraising at their individual sites during the month of February. More details on this will be coming out as well. Any questions about the foundation can be directed to Christine Libarowski at the ESC. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of the North Penn Education Foundation? North Monco Technical Career Center, Mr. Kerr.
Yes, the operating committee met the 15th of last month after the holiday dinner. Very nice function, as usual. The resolution for, I guess, refinancing bonds was discussed and approved, and now it's before us tonight to discuss and approve, hopefully. And also, there's one other gentleman. They showed a little vignette of some guy who's a reality TV guy. I don't know who he is, but he's into automobiles, and he brought his car to the VOTAC for certain work. They did such a great job that he's enamored with us, and he's done a little commercial, in a sense, for the VOTAC. And unfortunately, I don't know who he is, but somebody, I suspect in the audience, maybe somebody knows, but it's kind of interesting. Interesting guy, a lot of energy. Finally, next month is being named or termed "Foundation February." The Foundation's student members, Taylor Young and Erin Hubner, are developing a plan to get all of our schools more involved in fundraising at their individual sites during the month of February. More details on this will be coming out as well. Any questions about the Foundation can be directed to Christine Libarowski at the ESC. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of the North Penn Education Foundation? North Monco Technical Career Center, Mr. Kerr.
Yes, the Operating Committee met the 15th of last month after the holiday dinner. Very nice function, as usual. The resolution for, I guess, refinancing bonds was discussed and approved, and now it's before us tonight to discuss and approve, hopefully. And also, there's one other gentleman, they showed a little vignette of some guy who's a reality TV guy, I don't know who he is, but he's into automobiles, and he brought his car to the Votech for certain work. He did, they did such a great job that he's enamored with us, and he's done a little commercial, in a sense, for the Votech. And unfortunately, I don't know who he is, but somebody, I suspect in the audience, maybe somebody knows, but it's kind of interesting, interesting guy, a lot of energy, and I think it, I mean, the kids loved it because, you know, they know who he is, and so there's a lot of good things happening over at the Votech. End of report.
Thank you. Montgomery County Intermediate Unit, Carolyn Murphy.
The IU Board met on November 19th, 2015, at the Norristown site. The Board approved a recommendation to approve the 2015-2016 operating budget in the amount of $8,405,640. The budget will be sent to the local school districts for action with election results by March 2015, and I'm happy to say that we're really with it because we're going to be doing this tonight. Management Services Director Stan Whister reported the state audit report was completed with no findings and no observations. Dr. Lois Robinson highlighted three classrooms that opened this school year, one at West Pots Grove, one at Satterton High, and one at the North Monco Career and Technical Career Center. Our director, Dr. John George, reported that the MCIU completed a federal grant application to operate the Head Start program for Montgomery County. The service would complement the MCIU's early intervention program and would serve an estimated 490 students, and we're really anxiously awaiting the results, obviously, of that grant. MCIU mentor coach Stephanie Schwab convened 38 instructional coaches representing 11 school districts in Montgomery County. Also in November, the MCIU's social education staff helped to provide training for 120 paraeducators. The next MCIU board meeting will be held on January 28th, 2015. Respectfully submitted, Carolyn Murphy.
Thank you. Any questions of the MCIU? All right, we're going to move forward with the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Dietrich.
Thank you, Mr. President. I recommend approval of the North Monco Technical Career Center bond refunding resolution with Exhibit A and B per Item BA 4, A through H.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry.
Recommend approval of the Administrative Services Budget of the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit for the fiscal year ending 6/30/2016 in the amount of $1,099,735 with no contribution from the North Penn School District.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Murphy, second by Mr. O'Donnell. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry.
Recommend approval of the Curriculum Instruction and Professional Development Services Budget of the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit for the fiscal year ending 6/30/2016 in the amount of $2,288,080 with a contribution from North Penn School District in the amount of $10,003.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mrs. Murphy. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry.
Recommend approval of the Legislative Services and Grant Development Budget of the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit for the fiscal year ending 6/30/2016 in the amount of $287,415 with a contribution from the North Penn School District in the amount of $14,179.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Murphy, second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
No.
One nay.
I recommend approval of the Technology and Information Services Budget of the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2016 in the amount of $4, 730,410 with a contribution from the North Penn School District in the amount of $185,067.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Kerr, second by Mrs. Leonard. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I do remind all board members that by bylaws, they do ask that you fill out an individual ballot, so please complete that and turn it in to Mr. Skrocky by the end of the meeting. Item F is, I recommend approval of the resolution presented by Bond Counsel for the issuance of nonelectoral debt in the amount of $9,950,000. That is different than what is on the agenda, it's $9,950,000 per what happened today, and we'll explain that in a minute. For the purpose of providing funds for the, first, costs of planning, designing, acquiring, constructing, furnishing, and equipping additions and improvements to Hatfield Elementary School. Second, the costs of planning, designing, acquiring, construction, furnishing, and equipping additions and improvements to other buildings and facilities of the school district. And three, the costs of issuing and, if applicable, insuring the bonds per Item BA 5, A through X.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions?
We do have a presentation, so Mr. Skrocky, if you would take it from here.
Thank you, Dr. Dietrich. Today, we did have the bond sale via competitive auction for what really is Phase 2 of the Hatfield Elementary School project, and tonight I'd like to introduce Mr. John Frye from our financial advisor, Public Financial Management, and our Bond Counsel, Mr. Mehoak, Scott Mehoak from Eckerd Siemens. They're going to review the details from the auction today, and I think all the news you're going to hear regarding this auction is very, very positive for the school district. Mr. Frye?
Great, thanks a lot, and good evening, everyone. Again, my name is John Frye from PFM. In front of all the board members, I put a blue-covered handout that I'll walk through. Again, we did have very good results today, the auction took place around 11 o'clock, and the interest rates that you'll see are very good. On page one of that handout shows the interest rate chart on the bottom of the page over the last 10 years or so, and you'll note that on the far right-hand corner, interest rates have stayed very low, and in fact, since December 1st, municipal bond rates have come down over 25 basis points, so we've seen a really good rally, and you'll be able to take advantage of that today with locking in these rates. The next two pages, Pages 2 and 3, show there was the three bidders that came in during the auction process, and Janie Montgomery Scott was the winning bidder, they provided the lowest overall cost to the school district, and that's what will be before you tonight. They were also the ones that won the auction in June of last year, and anecdotally, they have won a lot of our auctions over the last two months, they've been very aggressive, and again, they put in a very aggressive bid for you today. On page four is the series of 2015 bonds, these are the bonds that you'd be issuing. In column two is the principal amounts that add up to $9,950,000. The rates that were provided by Janie Montgomery Scott are in column three and four. If you look at the yields in column four, which is really the net cost of the district, they range from 0.45% to 2% in 2025. So, I think having a 2% rate in 2025 is phenomenal and well below what anybody would have estimated, you know, several months ago. Page five are the sources and uses of funds, the bonds will come in and pay all the costs of issuance. The settlement date is reflected in the middle of the page there, February 17th is when the monies will be available for your project. And I did want to note, in the bold box there, the yield of the issue, 1.95% is the yield that you'll report to the IRS. So, you're locking in about $10 million below 2%. So, not many times can you do that over the last, you know, 30 years or so, so that's phenomenal news. And then finally, just some kind of backup information, on page six is, you know, this is a two-step process for your project, the blue column there was last summer's deal, and the red column is today's deal that add up then therefore to the far right-hand column of debt service, about $13.8 million will be your run rate, but again, lower than anticipated. And it is interesting to note, up at the top, you'll see something called the arbitrage yield, last summer's deal, although at very, very low rates, was at a 2.38%, and again, today, we're at about a 1.95%, so really good news. And on page seven is just more information regarding how the rates from last summer were locked in, and today are even lower than those rates. So, that two-step process worked very well, and we're able to achieve good results. And then finally, the last couple pages just show two other school districts that entered the market in the last two weeks, one this week, one last week, and in each case, your North Penn school district rates were lower. And then finally, towards the back is the School Districts Moody's Rating Report. Again, your rating was affirmed at AA2, which is phenomenal, and even better news, it was put on Positive Outlook, so they're seeing good trends, good financial outlook for the school district. So, all those point to very positive news for the future as well.
And I do want to thank Mr. Skrocky for his work in helping that to happen, so appreciate that very much, Steve.
Absolutely. He spends a lot of time with our office, helping to get our information together, as well as spending time with Moody's, and certainly is a big, big part of that process, absolutely.
Yeah, just two quick questions.
Absolutely.
Or a comment. I think North Penn has always been super pleased by PFM. I mean, you guys really do us great news, we always make out, and I think we're all pleased for that, and I thank you for that. Quick question, where's Scott?
He's out of state today, traveling, otherwise he would be here.
Tell him, I think we missed him.
I do. His office is right beside mine, so we've been working hand-in-hand, but he had to be on an airplane this morning.
Okay, thank you. Quick question. I've been keeping track of all of our bond cost over the past 20 years, and it's not that often that we pay a credit rating, in this case, $11,700. Again, we don't pay it all the time, we have the best credit rating there is, so can you just tell me why we have to pay $11,700 for the credit rating here?
Every time any issuer across the country goes to market, that, in order to get this bond issue to the market, if we put it out there without a credit rating, no one would bid. You need to have, even though you had a credit rating last year, you always need to get it reaffirmed and have Moody's put their stamp on this bond issue, and so that they still say that series of 2015 is also a AA2. So, every time, any issuer always has to make that payment to Moody's, it's part of the process.
Okay, thank you.
And needed so that you get investors.
We made out, thank you.
Absolutely, great.
Mr. Frye, I'm really happy to see you. This was a great issue, and you did a great job, and I really appreciate it.
Great, great, thank you.
I'm sure you'll bill us.
I'll tell Scott. Scott Mehoak's here with the resolution.
You know, what you have in front of you is one of the exhibits is a resolution which was prepared in accordance with the Pennsylvania Local Government Unit Debt Act. The Debt Act governs what the resolution's required to have in order for school districts, as well as other municipalities, to incur debt. This is considered to be nonelectoral debt, which means you're pledging your full faith, credit, and taxing power. It is a general obligation of the school district, and based on that is pretty much how you get your strong credit rating. As John pointed out, as part of the terms, these are subject to optional redemption on March 1 of 2020, and the final maturity date is March 1 of 2026. Now, the debt service has been structured under the Debt Act so that it's wrapping around your existing debt, so all that means is that this particular bond issue is not level in and of itself, but when taken with all its other, all the other school district's debt, does produce level debt service, which is a requirement under the Local Government Unit Debt Act. Other than that, I'm not sure if anyone had any questions as to any specific provisions of the resolution?
Can you just, again, clarify, the term optional redemption, is that what we used to call, callable?
Callable, yeah. It just means that you have the option to redeem the bonds in March of 2020 if interest rates should drop, and there would be a refunding opportunity. So, you're not...
And that's strictly our decision.
Right. So, you're not locked in forever, you do have opportunities to refinance it, but you are giving bondholders call protection until that date.
Whatever, it'll never go down, not lower than what we have.
There is a risk of lower rates.
I just wanted to say that.
Yeah, never say never.
Yeah, there's a deflation risk out there, the Fed's real worried about it, there's a lot of stuff going on out there that's unprecedented.
Thank you. Any other questions for Bond Counsel or PFM? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of accepting this wonderful deal?
Aye.
Against it? Accept it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Great, thank you.
Recommend ratification of the Act 164 Deputy Tax Collectors to collect and settle taxes during any incapacitation of the elected tax collector per Item BA 6.
Motion by Mr. Schilling?
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Donnell. Comments or questions?
Is this act new? It's the first time we've ever done this?
Yes.
The act is new, yes.
Okay.
I see that we were authorizing some of the other local tax collectors to be the deputy collectors, is that the case in everyone, or are these people bonded for us?
Not the case in every situation. I think we do have some duplication where the acting collector is being the deputy collector. So, this would only be in the case of emergency, and per the act, each municipality, the county and the school district is asked to approve a resolution to authorize these individuals.
Do they need anything else other than our authorization?
No.
No? All right, I have a motion and a second. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the employment agreement dated January 15th, 2015 with Diane M. Holben, an extension of her term as Assistant District Superintendent to June 30th, 2018. A copy of the employment agreement is on file in the office of the superintendent.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by me. Sorry, Frankie, I got it there first. Any questions? Comments?
She does a wonderful job for us.
Yeah, I really appreciate what you do.
Exceptional job, really, you're just fantastic. You're awesome.
And if I had a vote, I would vote yes also. I appreciate it very much.
She, no, I'd say she covers her own, no, I'm just kidding.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Recommend approval of the 2015 Committee Assignments per Item BA 7.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Schilling? Second, anybody? Second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
One no? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the mediator's proposal dated December 26th, 2014 regarding the collective bargaining agreement between the North Penn Board of School Directors and the North Penn Education Association.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions?
Thanks, thanks for getting it done.
I appreciate everybody who was involved in this and taking the time to make sure that it got done, and it got done in the way that everyone is going to be happy about it. Thank you very much. And thank you, Mr. Kerr, for running that show. All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend acceptance of the gifts to the district as listed.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. Brown. Comments or questions?
Yeah, I want to say thank you very much for these contributions. Really, really appreciate it, I mean, I thank you so much.
Thank you, John.
Vince, I have a question. This came up over at the Votech, and I don't recall if somebody, a tax expert, could tell me. Normally, when we make donations, it's a small amount, $100, $500, $1,000, and it's a cash donation, or a whiteboard or something small like that. In this case, if we vote for this, if we vote for this, and we're saying the baby grand piano is worth $19,000, are we providing a definite income tax deduction for Mr. Hobbs? Are we saying, yes, we validate the $19,000 so he can put it on his income tax deduct, his income tax return as a $19,000 deduction?
We do provide a letter to any of the donors, basically thanking them for the gift and indicating the value of the gift after the board acts on the resolution item.
What's your concern, Frank?
I'm sorry?
What's the concern?
Well...
That it's worth $19,000?
But they finally decided over the Votech.
Somebody want to Google it?
No, what they finally decided over the Votech, some people were donating some cars, and some people had some questions regarding the significant value attached to that, and they thought that maybe the person would get a huge tax deduction when in fact it may not be worth that, so it was changed so that what they would do is just accept the donation without a value attached.
Who wants to pay taxes if they don't have?
They don't have to.
Yeah, but don't you think that would fall on the person who's donating it, it would be falling on us?
Of course.
You know, I donate things and stuff, and if I say they're worth it, I'll log it and I'll log it.
Exactly.
And the IRS can come to conclusions and say, okay, it's not worth this much. It doesn't fall back to the person you give it to.
Right.
That's my understanding, maybe I'm not...
Is that correct?
I think that's true. I think it's, we're not involved, and they're not going to look to us and say, oh, okay, the North Penn thought it was worth whatever.
Yeah.
I mean, I take stuff, you take clothing to various places, and they give you a blank receipt, you stick whatever number in you want. I mean, they don't go back to the Salvation Army and ask them what they thought. So I, I don't have a problem.
Does that answer the question a little bit, Frank? Is that...
Well, if Tim doesn't have a problem, then I'm okay.
There you go.
He's the attorney. He's the expert.
No, 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 I don't...
I would just like to tell Mr. Hobbs thank you.
Well, I said thank you very much.
I second that.
We have a... All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Let's move it on.
Recommend approval of the personnel items that are listed under number 1A through C.
So moved. Motion by Mrs. Leonard, second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of a $5,500 of supplemental compensation to William Bartle for the completion of athletic director responsibilities above and beyond the teacher contract day for the time period of January 10th, 2015, through June 30th, 2015.
So moved. Motion by Mr. Schilling.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions?
Yeah, I just, I don't think, if you have to replace Doc Ryan, it's with a guy like this. I mean, he's, he was an outstanding athlete as a student at North Penn at Dite. I don't know how many state championships he won as a coach of the swim team and the water polo team, Hall of Famer in North Penn Hall of Fame, and probably will be a Hall of Famer in the Pennsylvania State Coaches Association. He is already a Hall of Famer. Great choice. I, yeah, I can't say enough about this guy. There you go.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Any other comments in general?
Good guy.
Did.
Good guy. I agree. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of student travel, per item BA 10.
Motion by Mrs. Charnock, second by Mr. Brown. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of contracts, per item BA 11, A through B, copies of which are